...thing that can be done administratively.
That's correct.
Okay, and I think what I would suggest then is that you have that conversation with the community and come back to the board at the next meeting so the board can affirmatively say, yes, let's get rid of these uses.
And just get them a checklist and let them put it at X.
And we may want to also start having a conversation with the Girl Scout officials about extending the timeframes, I think September 21st is the current date to achieve the rezoning and the release of the covenants.
So we've got six interested parties, attorney church has already given us a yes, so we can take them off. Then we've got Pinecrest HOA, I'm sorry, five, four, Pinecrest, no, five, Pinecrest HOA and then the four adjacent properties. So can we go back to these and say, as is, would you accept, which I think we've already done? And if they say no, can we then ask them, what terms would they accept under if it's those that criteria, you know, categories crossing them all?
You know, get rid of the billiard parlors if there's any of those kind of things.
Yeah, so what would you accept? Let us know what you would accept.
With the time we have left, we better just come up with a checklist of all the things, just have them X all the ones they don't want allowed.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying.
And keep in mind, one is the same.
Mike, can you take the list as it is, assuming you know what ones are disagreeable, marking those off?
Yes, ma'am, we actually plan to meet with one of the residents, some of the, or the HOA, to work with them quickly to get to a place where it's a win-win for both of them.
And who are you working with directly from the HOA?
Ed Cecil. He's one of the owners.
Ed Cecil.
He's an individual owner.
He's also the president, he's the president of the board too, I believe.
Ed's the president?
Yeah, we went to the HOA meeting, sat down and had a discussion with them.
You get it taken care of, you solve the problem, it's done.
And I would have to say that the reaction that I've gotten from the folks there is combative.
Thank you, Mike. We've got one more, I believe, utility manager.
Good afternoon, Kenny Hall, utility manager. I'm just going to give you a quick rundown, I've got three, three updates. I want to give you an update on the hydrants. We are at 314 right now, that is 314 fire hydrants in our system that have been tested, checked, classified, logged, sized, every bit of information we can possibly, useful information that we can get into our system. We're at about the halfway point, so I'm guessing there's probably going to end up between 550 and 650 fire hydrants in our system. And it is a colossal task, we did not think it would be as expansive as it is, but it is. We're doing it once a week, everybody on the, everybody in our crew is out one day a week doing our fire hydrants, so we're currently at 314. Stony Brook is completely done, that's the only community we've knocked out valves, water, irrigation, sanitary sewer, and fire hydrants. We've had to basically switch over to do all fire hydrants until we get them all done, till we find out what's out there. We're really, really trying to get classified the older 1990 and below models and find out exactly what we have and what we're going to do with them when they start, when they start, especially on Gateway Boulevard. If we start having issues with them, it's going to be a big...
What's your guess on percentage of how many of those have restraint issues of the 314?
Of the 314, we're probably looking at about, I would say, anywhere between 50 and 60.
Percent or total?
Of the 314, the majority of the ones that we found below 1990 were actually mahogany run.
Were actually what?
In mahogany. There's a lot, that whole chunk there of mahogany is, they're all 87, 88, 89, and then the Gateway Boulevard and Griffin Drive.
So they're needing restraint?
Yeah, and Waterford Village, any of the older ones, Waterford Village is another prime example where they're all 1988, 1987.
I'm just trying to get a handle, so of the 314, you're saying around maybe 60 have to be restrained?
Yeah.
So you're looking at maybe 300 grand right there.
Yeah, if there's a problem. Yeah, I mean, as I say, the fire hydrant can sit there for 50 years and you never have a problem out of it, it's a problem is when it starts to go bad and getting the parts forward or replacing it, or how we go about doing that. Same with the irrigation system, we're taking the painting, the roof estimates, I haven't had any roof estimates yet, I've got right now three painting estimates with two more to come, and we'll be sitting down with BCI for the upcoming SCADA. For the 2018 budget, we're going to be adding another chunk of, we're going to do wells this year. So we're going to be adding all the well system onto our irrigation system, which gives us an extreme degree of command and control, where we can run those wells remotely, wherever we are, whoever, usually the person on call is the one in charge of monitoring it. And another thing, when we add those onto the system, we'll be able to get historical data, start tracking it all, and getting that into our system, which will be a really nice feature, once it's done, updated and running like it should be. And I just want to give you a quick number on the AMIs for August. So far, we're on the 17th, we've had 143 issues with the, on general callouts ranging from checking for a leak, a stuck meter, emergency calls. The dead MIUs are starting to come back, we've got 45 so far for the month, which is a pretty big number, and they are not even halfway through their list, so I would imagine at the next board meeting, I will be able to give you a total for the month. So far, 85 for June, we haven't come close to that, but as of right now, we're sitting at 46 dead MIUs, which is a pretty big number. And they have two people going out and doing this. So we're going to, I'm guessing, if the trend holds up, we're going to end up at about the same we had for June, 85, 90, 100, somewhere in there.
And those we package up and send off?
Send them back, they send us back, they send us back, send us back new ones. Say, if you take that away, the biggest thing we have is exactly what the MI system is designed to do, tell us what, if there's a problem at the house, the wires have been cut, they got a leak. Once we get past the MIUs, this system is running, right now we have 7,000, 760 MIU units in the system, and we're running at 98.6 on a 3A trend, which is excellent, excellent. And then the one last thing we have is WSP USA, Fort Myers has been hired to do the modification for our water irrigation permit. A purchase order was issued for $5,000, and any additional fees will be required for, if it goes above $5,000, especially if they get into the modeling.
I'm sorry.
If they have to, if they have to do any kind of modeling, it's going to be an additional expense above.
But what's this for, please?
For the water, for our water irrigation permit.
Permit.
Southwest, Southwest Water Management? South Florida Water Management?
You're going to address that name issue, they're going to take care of that?
I believe so, yes.
The Gateway Services Country Club? We need to get, we need to get that squared away. I don't know if we want one or we want to buy one, but I've got a seller.
Kenny, real quick, with the fire hydrants, is that a maintenance task, or are you out there identifying and logging locations?
It should be, it should be a maintenance, a maintenance task, maybe once a year. The way we're doing it now and the way we're classifying everything, I'm telling everybody that we're only going to have to do this once, once we get it all right, we get all the information, that's it, we got it.
But you have a log of where...
Every fire hydrant, everything.
Turkey operations.
Yeah, we have, we have dates, the date of the stamp, the date of the hydrant, the make, the make, you know, the whole.
Everything.
And identification, so anybody that could take the information, look at it and generally find out, you know, you'll know exactly where that fire hydrant is. And we're doing it per community. So every community is, will have a total count.
Mark, one question. How many meters are left?
By USA's reckoning, nine. By my reckoning, from what we have, I have a list that I got today, and there's about 26 of them on here.
That haven't been changed?
They know, the verification process is a bit sketchy, but we're looking at about no more than 10, 11 left total.
We're getting there.
Yes, in our lifetime, in our lifetime...
Which comes first, the logic or the road turnover?
The problem is the contractor, they're hitting us, they come, they go, they go. We finally, we, I told them Wednesday that they're not just showing up, they're going to call us, let us know when they're going to be available, how much time they're going to be available. Terry Hanlon does it, and they're going to work with Terry. I said, Terry's not stopping everything, he's doing when you decide to show up. So they've given us a time, and this is what we're going to do. And they have, they have a terrible employee, they've, just a terrible employee turnover. We've had, this, I think we're on number nine.
Wow.
And they all come out and they ask for the same thing, can we have a parts list? Can you show us where it is, you know, and then next week it's another guy, and then we can have a parts list, can you show us where it is? And we're finally to the point where we're just...
Don't ask me, because you're going to like the answer.
Thank you. That moves us to the consent agenda, we have two consent agenda items, does anybody have one they want to pull? Okay, anybody else? Go ahead, Kathy, and then I'll ask you.
Time again, the adjournment. And there's no vote numbers for a couple of items that we motioned and approved, according to them, and so I don't know what the numbers were, and I'm looking at page, agenda page 35.
Yeah, I see him.
There's two, both of them.
It looks like there's more than just that.
Yeah, there is.
Stephen, can we get those back on there and have these minutes come back to us?
Yes, I did ask about the time of adjournment, and Mary Ellen mentioned to me that unless we say it on at the end, there's nothing on the recording that shows the time.
Okay.
So we just have to either, I remember at the end, send her an email or we make a note.
We'll say it out loud, so it's on the tape from now on, okay? So we'll have those minutes come back to us. Do I have a motion for, for B?
Come on.
Second.
And it's a big improvement, by the way.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We have to save the public hearing till actually 5 o'clock, so let's move to 6A, which is an action item. And this is the Joe Diserbo retainer, and for him to help us continue on our path to
Need a motion to approve?
I'll take one.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Question?
Okay, Mr. Guy?
First of all, this dollar amount seems quite high to me from what I can deduce from reading the proposal. Secondly, the items in the proposals are pretty much what I call soft items as opposed to hard items, and I will try and define one or more of those. For instance, number two is assist with the design of a succession planning process. Now, if this were General Motors, I would think that a succession planning process would be very important. With an organization this size, you're either going to have, you're either going to employ more people than you need so you have natural succession, or maybe this should have been called...
Career Development.
What do you call it when people...
Cross-training?
Cross-training. If that's, if that's what it is...
That's what I think it is, I think that's what it is.
That makes a lot more sense to me.
I think that's what it is.
But another is increased communications for residents, board and staff. There isn't any way to tell whether or not the consultant has earned his pay on doing that. If this were all up to me, I would change some of those objects to updating the HR book, or updating our rules, or updating our criteria manual, or something that we can, you know, actually get our hands around and determine whether or not the consultant's done his job. Thank you very much.
And I think there, in the scope of work of the proposal, which is, because this is, this is basically a sheet that staff put on, the look, underneath that, there should be a more, not that page, but the next one goes into a more, into Joe's description of what he feels like he would be helping with, and I think this is, what he's proposing is more accurate than, and in more detail, actually, I shouldn't say accurate, but in more detail than what staff put together as a cover letter.
Mark?
That's all right, go ahead. Go ahead.
All right, I'm going to also go along with Mr. Guy about the money amount, because that's a total of $11,400 for that span, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Bloom where this money will come from.
We'll have to take it out of contingency. There is a $5,000 professional services line item in the budget for the general fund, and then the rest, contingency.
Okay, thank you.
I think that the staff we have, the management that we have, probably could find their way through all this and not have the need and necessity, but we're in the middle of so many things going on right now, it isn't going to happen. We've got so many things that they have to do, that's day in, day out, needed and necessary, that these type of things, they need some help, in my opinion, with get them done, because they do need it to be done. And Bill, I do believe it's cross-training is what they're referring to, and we've got a real exposure there, as we have found out just recently on some issues upstairs in the good old hot box. We've got to get that mess cleaned up, and I think Joe can help us on managing this thing a little bit better.
Yeah, and here's what, here's what I would say, I mean, my expectation of Joe coming in was to help onboard Chris, and I even think at this point, I'm assuming that Chris is doing everything that he can to do his job, and all signs say that he's doing a great job. But I think we need to continue to offer him some support and even some checks and balances. So what I would, I would like for Joe to do is come in and assess staff, assess Chris, offer him some, you know, some consulting, some guidance in areas that he may or may not be aware of, being new to the district manager position. But I do agree with Bill that there needs to be, some of it is just consulting, and those are soft calls, that's being there to set up meetings with Chris to go through day-to-day and, you know, help with guidance and whatever, but I think there is a portion of it that needs to be hard, needs to be hard trackable items, like aligning them to an assessment of staff, whether you call it a cross-training or staff optimization, you know, whatever that, whatever that is. And I would limit this contract to six months, I would go from now until, let's say, January, end of January, as opposed to all the way to September, or, I'm sorry, September to August, just because that aligns us with the end of our fiscal year, and I think six months would be, should be an optimal amount of time at this level of engagement, to work with Chris to get him where he needs to be, to get the staff support.
Our fiscal year is October, David.
Yeah.
So it's October, October. Yeah, this is for one year, and that was, I know, his intent.
October 1st is our fiscal year.
Well, I was just looking at it from when Chris was coming onboard to the end of this year, but I would, I don't know necessarily that I would go agree with an actual full 12-year engagement.
12 months.
I'm sorry, 12 months, sorry, 12 months. I would probably look at six months with an option to renew, or we'll just, you know, reengage with separate contracts. So what I'd like to do before we, before I would vote in favor of this agreement, is probably revise it slightly to include...
I don't know that six months is really enough. I mean, because we keep, we keep stumbling our way through becoming the organization that we want to be, and I, and really without Joe's guidance, I don't think that we'll get where we want to be. And my feeling is that this isn't going to be money thrown away, this is going to be money well spent.
No, and I agree with you in, in the majority of that, and I'm not saying that it wouldn't take 12 months, I'm just saying I would, I would rather start with six and then renew it for another six, based on what the output that we're seeing, than just go ahead and sign a year contract. And I'm in favor of this, so that's my position.
I, I don't even know if he would do it for a shorter time.
I don't either.
And...
I just don't want to take the chance of losing it.
I think that, I think we need his guidance, and we've already got one employee that we've lost, and we're going to be bringing another one on, and she's, he or she probably won't even be in that position, you know, it'll take a couple months. So he needs to be evaluating that person too, so you're, I think six months is not long enough. That's my opinion.
I'd be willing to, to give on the 12 months, but I do think...
And I think this is really 11, isn't it?
Yeah, but can we put some stipulations in that we'll, we have the opportunity to realign some of the tasks?
11, September.
Because I think we do need to put some additional...
Well, but that staff, that's the staff letter.
Yeah, I went through.
Because this is, this is what he envisages.
It's the implementation of his yellow brick road.
Yes, it is.
But there is some things that are open to interpretation, I just want to get, I don't want us to get at the end of this and say, gosh, we didn't get out of it what we thought we would, so I just want to have some, some control on our side.
One other aspect too, you have a 60-day termination ability.
Okay, so we...
That's in the proposal at the last page, on page 96 of the agenda. So four or five months into it, if you're not comfortable with where it's heading, or six months?
The contract has a 60-day cancellation, doesn't it?
Correct.
Right.
Yes.
That's why I don't have any problem with doing what it says. We've got a ton of stuff to do.
And I think Joe is the type of person that if there's anything that we want to ask him to include, or will you help us with this? I don't see him saying, no, I ain't doing that. Because he, he sees what we're trying to accomplish.
Well, the two areas that I'm very adamant that we need to include in this is, one, a staff and leadership assessment, to make sure that we're where we need to be, and then if Joe can provide some leadership development, whether it's directly or indirectly, I think that would be something too. So how do we go about adding to this, or is that something we can do after the fact?
I don't know, we couldn't just indicate to him it's approved subject to, that he acknowledges that those two other items are added to the task?
Yeah.
Just be dealt with it. I wrote down one, staff and leadership development, what was the other?
And the other one is, is really staff assessment.
Yeah, one way to do it is to convey that to him, then he can revise this, because he probably has this in his system, and then just send it back, sign.
So we're, the motion is we approve this condition upon receiving back from him these, these two, revised scope of work with these two additional items. I'll redo the motion.
You agree with it?
I do agree.
A second?
Yes, I agree with that.
Because you were the first.
Yeah.
Anybody have any other comments they'd like to make on this? I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Four to one. All right. That moves us to 6B, contract approval, Phase 2 Pelican Reserve Airator Project. Does anybody, since we've heard from Mr. Deppart earlier, do I have a motion?
On the basis that we do have the engineering letter, I'll make...
And he did.
I have it here with the packet.
I make the motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I had a question, I'm sorry.
Okay.
We're, we're changing the amount, right, to 329 of the 008. That's correct, from the one that's in the...
We're just omitting that one, pound.
Yeah, so...
I mean, that's what mine, my book says that, on the page.
Right, okay, that's what I wanted to make sure, okay. I'm sorry.
Are you in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. Five to zero. All right, 6C, turnover and conveyance of Casella Phase 1 and 2.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make one comment? I believe that that will get us to the fleet pond. Remember, while we talked about that, and we had an effort to get to the end of the bond fund with this, I don't know whether you need all of it, but this should get us to depleting the available money for the bond fund that we had set aside.
Utilizing is appropriate, not depleting utilizing, as Mr. Peter was saying.
The only remaining money that will still be there will should be the roadwork for the Vicenza area, the final lift, if you know what I mean. I think that's the only thing we're trying to reconcile, is keeping them.
Okay.
We're going to ask that before something.
Okay, thank you. Casella Faces 1 and 2, who wants to tackle this one?
I'll take it up. I just made the, she maker here is the last meeting, we brought the turnover and conveyance of Casella, the bases wanted to board for acceptance, and we ran into an issue, we started talking about sandbar between the two projects, did this, you know, state of concern, does not impact the capacity or function of a flowway? I believe Mr. Tinkler went and spoke to the water manager in the district about that, and there is a major change, and it's basically, we did go out, we went through on Casella, you know, to check the status, and after observing about 75 instances of cracked curb, cracked road, gutters, and things like that, I was really questioning whether we had 10% of the bond left, whether that could cover those repairs, and I changed my recommendation to say that we would consider the turnover and conveyance of those features, the room weight curves, the storm sewer, after their vertical construction is complete. And part of that is my experience with the amount of damage that's done to our utility facilities and other facilities during that vertical construction. And I think we would be better just to wait till they're done, then do that inspection, walk through it, and then take it versus taking it and then having to deal with all the issues that come up related to that. Some of those are like Hampton, they're over there constructing right now, where we get calls into heavy rain, hey, the streets are flooded. Well, the streets are flooding because the construction crews have the storm grade sealed off the paraplex, so all the dirt doesn't go down in the storm drains. And then if we accept those roads, then we're the one that has to go out there, pull it and reinstall it, or after they've done their vertical construction, there's a lot more sand in there, we have to clean it, we're being inspected, ask them to clean it. But there's a lot of negative impacts to the facilities during that vertical construction.
Any comments from anybody, or questions for Chris?
Oh, I do.
May I?
Yes, may.
Chris, unfair question, but do you have any idea how soon construction will be finished there?
Casella, they're on their last four plex right now, so I would imagine in the next 30 days or so.
30 days?
At least the Casella 1, and the Casella 2, they want us to take, and they haven't even started any construction out there. So we've accepted the utility facilities, the underground, because they need the water sewer service to get the CO to sell the units. However, they don't need that turnover just to sell the units on the storm sewer and the road we'd cement, you would landscape it if you wanted to look at that.
I guess I didn't, I guess I didn't ask the question properly, because your answer didn't quite do it. We have an item to accept or not accept, Casella Faces 1 and 2, and they are together in this agenda. Now, you're telling me Casella 1 should be finished in 30 days, is that so?
I would guess that, just by the...
Well, let's say 45 then. If, if the construction of Casella 1 was finished in 45, and all of the infrastructure was checked out and brought up to enough, would you be in favor of accepting Casella 1 by itself at the end of 45 days and...
Yes.
Okay, but Casella 2, they haven't even started yet, so that's going to be possibly years, is that so?
Yes, sir. How do you get it to...
It goes back to a cul-de-sac and goes left and right.
So there's no...
They're not connected.
Okay, so there's no potential damage to one as a result of construction on its own.
Can we separate, couldn't, can we logically separate those two?
Yes, sir, correct. The criteria manual allows us to accept in phases, review in phases, so yes, we could.
Well, I want to be fair to WCI, although I don't think they've always been fair to us, and I will elaborate on that if Mr. Mann wants me to, but nonetheless, would, would the rest of the board... the rest of the board think it appropriate to agree to accept Casella one in forty-five days or so after the?
At completion with an inspection and the.
Inspection and everything?
I got a couple of questions about it, but yes, in general, I, I think I could go along with that.
Please.
Yeah, I think, what, what is the timeline for the final lift, on how we, how it's been done?
I have to ask the contract.
Would Casella one, in my opinion, because I've been out there way more than I've wanted to in the last two weeks, when they finish that, and I agree with you, I don't see why it would take any more than thirty days, but Casella one could have the final lift, and the curbs that are chewed up out there, and any of the other things that are associated with it, could easily be done, and I wouldn't have any problem accepting that, probably at the curve of the, the radius, where they come in and go around? Because trucks that are going into Casella two are going to go around, so I wouldn't take that cul-de-sac in the middle, but I'd take everything to the east. So I can see that. And the second question would be, what is our dollar ramification, or let's go the other way, if we would accept, let's say, Casella two, okay? No, no vertical construction whatsoever, and during that construction period, we get all that debris and junk into the storm sewers, how is that taken care of relative to, who pays for it?
Well, we ask the contractor.
Since we've accepted it?
Well, we ask the contractor to do it under a warranty period, if it was a warranty item. Cleaning that out, it would depend, I guess, where the debris came from, and they say it would be natural.
So then we could accept Casella two without vertical, and still have a leverage to cover things like all the broken curbs and all that stuff? Because that, that's where my concern is, and I think that's what Chris is saying, is that a lot of stuff happens during that construction period, and I'm assuming that unless they had a really bad contractor, Casella one was built correctly. But boy, you wouldn't know it by looking at some of those curbs, it looks like somebody went out there and just beat them to pieces.
Purposely.
Right.
Yeah, it, so that, that's my question, is, is that what's our protection if we were to accept it without the vertical? Because we know there's an exposure, because it happened in Casella one.
But we're also putting. It could be the only protection we would have, would be to claim that ten percent of the bond that we would hold after.
So the question is, does the ten percent?
Cover.
Cover what could be the potential damage?
That's Chris's issue.
The amount of.
That's got to be for you.
Damage in, at Casella, I don't have a solid estimate, but I bet it would approach or exceed what that residual is. And one thing we're starting to pick up from the residents out there, too, is they'll have a section of curb that'll come next to their driveway, you know, a little flat. And the curbs cracked, well, it's causing that flap on their driveway to crack. And I had one of the residents come up and said, well, it's your curb that's cracking, you're going to fix my driveway, because your curb cracked is what made my driveway fall out at the end. And I was like.
Right now, she picked the wrong pronoun.
If I may, Madam Chairman, just one, one thought, and it's more of a nature of a question. The city of Fort Myers requires various bonding, probably requirements when vertical construction goes up, maybe, maybe not. And I guess, I don't know if they'd be of any help, that before they issue any certificates of occupancy, they would require any of the curbing or sidewalks adjacent to the units for which the CO is being requested, to be repaired and brought up to standard. And again, I don't know if they'd be willing to do that, we've not had the best of luck in the past dealing with them cooperating in the building phase. I think typically it's been once we've accepted the infrastructure, they approve the, the vertical.
But this is not in the city of Fort Myers.
This is the county.
Okay, this is the county, well, the county, the same thing, if we have the county issue, if the county was willing to cooperate and not issue certificates of compliance or certificates of occupancy, until such time as the damaged infrastructure, maybe, that might be a way, because if, if, I wouldn't, and once again, if we get that assurance, but if the dollars that Chris is seeing in Casella one indicate that, you know, it's going to exceed the ten percent, and it's probably going to exceed that in Casella two.
What can we just increase the bond?
I guess, well, the, the perm criteria manual talks about one hundred and ten percent. And I, I guess what we could say is we will accept it, but based upon your track record, we want you to post an additional ten percent of the construction cost to account for these additional damage to the infrastructure.
Potential liability.
Yeah, and I can look at the perm criteria manual, see if that possibility is there, but like Chris said.
I could go with that.
Like Chris said, we can accept it in phases if we wish, the board can't, and they don't have to. And I can look at, with Chris and Danny, whether or not we can accept it in phases with additional protections in addition to the warranty, like an additional bond amount.
But your, your concern is, and I agree with you, storm sewer, and the potential of that stuff getting into during the construction, which is a, a liability for us to accept and clean, and then the, the damage to the road structure itself. Those are the two issues. I, I could go along with Tony at that additional bond, and then we could accept it, and then have.
We'll research and bring it back to the next board meeting after that. I wouldn't, not ready to do that today, but that's something to look at. The answer may be no, we can't, but.
What?
Cross that bridge, but.
Or maybe WCI would be willing to voluntarily post an additional bond.
You mean, well, no.
If we find out we don't have the authority, I would love to see if we have that authority.
But going back to Bill's original deal, I'm, I'm, I agree able to separating Casella one and getting that thing wrapped up and done. We, we've got, I guess, a punch list, so we know what has to be done to fix it, to get it to our satisfaction for approval. That, that's kind of a question, you do have that, we do have that punch list, Charles? We know what, I know that we've gone out, I don't know if it's been transmitted. Chris, did we transmit that punch list you came up with to WCI, Leonard?
This is all just done last week, most of the punch lists, as these turnovers have taken, you know, they might have been submitted a time six months ago, eight months ago.
Punch, the punch, yeah, punchless items were provided us a long time ago. I mean, keep in mind, these submissions originally went in two thousand fifteen, early two thousand sixteen, and all those items were done. We have some new items that just came up with the memo dated today. But in terms of the separation, I'm being told these are permitted together everywhere, city, bonds, everything's tied together, so it's not really an option for us to separate them out from that standpoint, in other words.
That's the end of that.
Why is it not, I guess the question is, you're asking for our acceptance, you're not asking for the city or the counties, and if we can accept a project in phase, we can do it in phases.
Yes, but we cannot sit there and let half of that other permit sit there without a maintenance entity in place on otherwise constructed infrastructure. So we would be forced, I mean, in theory, could we give you Casella one and have to find some other option for Casella two? Yes, but that makes no sense to me personally.
We're not talking about the city or county issues, Charles, we're talking about the district issues, the district has ability to do it in phases. If you have to take additional steps for the city and or county, it's, in my opinion, that's the developer's.
Right, and I'm telling you, that's not an option for us, unfortunately.
Why is it not, why is it not an option?
Because we're not able to let, as I, as Mr. McMurray pointed out in his letter, we're not an acceptable maintenance entity till build-out. Supervisor Guy asked.
We're not, once again, we're not, I don't believe the board is saying that, you know, the maintenance entity until build-out.
If the question is to separate them, and I believe Supervisor Guy was asking about phase two, it's about a two-year build-out, is what I was told. So that's the time period on phase two. With respect to phase one, Mr. Shoemaker may be correct, I actually don't know, thirty days, forty-five days, I'm not sure, but it's a two-year time period for phase two. The Casella two infrastructure are permitted together, everything's tied together. So in our mind, we have an obligation. Now, this board may say, that's your problem, not our obligation, that's fine, but we still have to fix it, which means we will have to find an entity to maintain and turn over Casella two in the interim. So I'm not suggesting it's necessarily your problem, but I'm telling you, it's not an option for us to do it that way.
Who's been the entity that's been doing it up to this point?
And that's been Lennar, and that's put us, and that's sort of the crux of the problem I sort of referenced earlier, that's not really acceptable. We have built these things, for example, the water management system, I believe, was certified as complete in April. Now, the district hasn't come down on anybody, but you technically are supposed to have that in the operating entity in thirty days. So if, let's say, we were in an HOA and there was no CDD, that would have been done last April. Now, to the extent we have sandbar issues, punchless items, warranty issues, defect issues, we'd still have to address and fix those. And, and, you know, if the bond, if the ten percent isn't enough, and we can document that, that's something we could consider, to give the district the protections that you discussed. What you mentioned earlier about those protections, that's not controversial or objectionable to Lennar, but waiting is, is simply not an option. And Mr. Pierce may disagree with you, with me, but our position clearly is we are not able to do that.
What, and let me ask, you say it's not acceptable.
Correct.
Who is it not acceptable to?
The permitting authorities. So in Florida, developer is not an acceptable entity to maintain infrastructure when it's complete, irrespective of how many homes are built, whether it's ten homes or a thousand homes, they're not acceptable. So when the water management system, for example, is certified as complete, we have to get that into an operating entity, again, developer's not acceptable, condo, HOA, CDD, those are all fine, government, whatever, within thirty days. Now, if you're trying to work on it, does the water management district sometimes not come down real hard? Yes, but if it's, we're not accepting it till build-out, they're going to say violation, you got to get it in an operating entity, and we'll be forced to find somewhere to put it that's acceptable to them.
If, if you can come up with the increase in the bond, I think we could have answered the question, because we then have the coverage on our exposure.
And I guess another, and another aspect, I guess, is, I, I not, excuse me. Another aspect, Madam Chairman and Board, is that, you know, we've heard saber rattling with regards to the district. The district understands the issues that this district has faced, and the repairs and activities that this district had to go through, in repairing facilities that had accepted, that were certified as being complete and in compliance with plans and specifications. So that's number one. Number two, I think South Florida Water Management District also recognizes our permit criteria manual. Is that correct, Danny? I believe they recognize it, and they recognize that we have obligations under that. So I guess, this, this, the, in a HOA or property owners association formed by the developer that's still controlled by the developer at the time the infrastructure is completed, is far different than an elected governmental body that has a fiduciary obligation. Charles, you know that darn well. So I guess the idea is, we, with the, with the, with the authorization of the board, we will, if the board's inclined to say, split off Casella two and look at Casella, Casella one, accept it. As to Casella two, have the staff come back at the next board meeting with whether or not the district has, this district has the ability to accept Casella two and increase the bonding amount to take care of the damages that occur, because going after the contractor after the fact is very difficult.
And the Florida legislature has made it even more difficult.
I, I would have no problem doing what Tony just said, is if we can get Casella one under, in this thirty-day deal, have the, the punch list issues rectified, and I understand what Rhonda's saying about the, the term. Our issue is, I don't think the term, because you said two years, a year after that's three years old, were covered, it's the amount. We have the exposure of the amount. So if we could get the additional ten percent, I think we can then accept it without the verticality.
All of it, you're making, I mean, yes. Okay, because we're, again, we are not offering it as a, and we're not able to. I'm not saying we're not willing, we're not, we, Tony can disagree, but my advice to my client, what they believe, is we are not able to do that. So we are not offering one by itself, because we're unable, in our view, respectfully, to turn that over by itself.
Move to table this item, Madam Chairman?
Even if we could table it to the next board meeting, so we have definite time certain.
And I'm also, just for the record, yeah, this has been tabled a lot, a lot of our items haven't been on here, and again, many of these are two years old. I feel it's unfair, we tabled it last time for an, an issue, which was now resolved, now another issue. I feel like, and my client probably feels, in two weeks, it's going to get tabled again, because there's going to be some other things.
Charles, can we get a indication affirmatively, hopefully, that if we take it all, which is what you're asking for, because you can't supposedly separate it, if we take it all, can we get that ten percent bond increase? Because I think that will go a long way to giving us an option that we can agree to.
I, I'm, I'm just the lawyer, so I probably am not in a position to actually do that, but if, what I would ask is if I go explore that, because, I mean, I understand what you're saying there.
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna stop right here, because the item has been tabled, I think.
Well, the motions have been made in section, I don't know if it's reported on yet.